All right, we'll call the regular meeting to order. It is October fourteenth, it is eight thirty, all members are present. We'll start with the pledge. All right. All right, I see. Couple of hands raised. All right, so Nancy Walsh, why don't we start with you? Where did you go?
Nancy Walsh.
I'm sorry, unmute it.
You can hear you now.
I'm here, I have, I have nothing, I'm just an observer. Thank you.
Okay, I thought you had to do anything, okay. Kathy Connolly.
Hi there.
Hi there Kathy, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. I saw that you're gonna consider a commercial blight ordinance. And I just wanted to offer a resource that might be helpful. You know, around the country, there are a lot of people like myself who are trying to put in more and more native plants. And then there are other people who identify those plantings as blight. And so there have been some model ordinances developed by different groups to address this in a way that municipalities can differentiate between blight and native plants. And so I'd like to share that with you. I'll just put it in an email to Carl. But it was drafted by a municipal attorney, seems to be very thorough in its language to me. And I hope that that might be a resource to you.
Do you further explain what, I don't know that I fully understood. So you're saying where there might be a lot of growth on a piece of property that is native versus not native, it should be considered blight? Is that what you're basically saying?
It's a little more nuanced than that, but yeah, that's what comes up in a lot of places, particularly homeowners associations. And so it's more, this ordinance, I think is more inspired by the pushback by neighborhoods and HOAs against people who, let's for instance, want to convert their lawns to a native planting. And so a lot of it comes down to lawn versus garden. And then within the garden, what is planted there and how tall it is. There's also the issue of stem saving and leaf saving in the winter, which ecologically are great practices, but which a lot of people object to. So this ordinance was drafted to give municipalities a way of delineating between native plantings that are acceptable in a built environment versus something that is just truly wild, unkempt and you know, unacceptable in the built environment. And so I just thought it might be a resource to you as you consider the commercial blight ordinance or anything regarding blight ordinance, residential blight ordinance as well. And yeah, it doesn't say that there is no such thing as blight. It says that we should be more finely granulated in our considerations when it comes to plantings.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
I'll look for that, Kathy, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna send it over in an email right now.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I have another meeting to go to, so I can't stay for the discussion. But I'm happy to converse with anybody if it is something that comes up in your discussions.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica Kelly.
Hi, how are you?
All right.
So this is in regards to the commercial blight ordinance as well. Over the past year, my sons, as well as many other eighth grade boys, have gotten into fishing. Something I wholeheartedly promote. It gets kids off the devices and into the fresh air. While Gardner's Landing isn't a hotspot to catch a fish, it's still a great safe spot for kids to go and cast a line. It's also perfect for when I am attending one thing or another at the pavilion. On two separate occasions, I've had to pull shards of glass out of the soles of my youngest son's crocs from when they walked through the dock and dine property over to Gardner's Landing. Or while they're just trying to cast a line closer to where the dock and dine property is, further away from Gardner's Landing. Just in hopes of catching anything. I think that the commercial blight ordinance would hopefully help support these kids' continued interest in fishing as well as allow parents to feel content of them being there doing innocent amazing things. And then also on a second note, I, after leaving a meeting there last night, I noticed it was pitch black over in that area. I don't know if there's a way that we could possibly get some lighting, even if it's like in Gardner's, and I mean like low-key lighting, like solar powered lighting or something. Because it's definitely pitch black from the mini golf course over. And I don't know, I just, I think it would be, make it a little bit more safe, not that people are over there in the pitch black, but just something to think about.
Well, eventually, hopefully next year, I hope we do intend to put some lighting along a pathway that will be going from mini golf right through to Gardner's Landing.
Awesome, awesome, perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, and Deb Shaw, you had your hand up, but I don't know you wanted to speak or not.
Hey, hi. I just wanted to say that I support having a commercial blight ordinance. It seems perfectly reasonable that we expect our commercial businesses to be good citizens and to, you know, we like them here, but only if they can upkeep their properties. And obviously, I think it's also an opportunity to address some of the problems at the dock and dine location, but not exclusively about that. The other thing Carl, I wanted to ask was what the plan is for emergency services. There has been some concern that Mr. Spira is remaining in that position. And I know that I would prefer that he not be involved in that any longer. But I don't know what the plan is or what the rules and regulations are regarding our emergency management.
Yeah. So right now, there technically, we appoint an emergency management director every two years. But I, after doing some research on this with our attorney, it appears to be more of a statutory, just like, dare I say, fire marshal, building official, or police chief. Not entirely, it's not as strict as that. But there's certainly an argument to be made. So at least until after the election, he remains in that position. And it will be for the it will be, well, it'll be a negotiation between the next board of selectmen and the chief as to whether he's replaced or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Looney.
On that same subject, that's not a satisfactory answer. Your board should sever all ties with that chief before you go into your walk-in victory on November fourth. And if you don't, what are you doing for the town? You already gave him more money than he deserves. And for him to hold you up on an emergency management that some fireman or another police officer, or even an outside person can handle. He did a good job doing it, but he's gotta be severed from all town things. And you guys have to do it before you walk into your, well, not your, you two walk into your new position again. Walk in. They just handed to you. So what are you gonna do?
We're gonna, we're going to address it at the board of selectmen meeting after the election, when the next appointments are made.
That's your next meeting?
That's, he holds that position right now and cannot be removed from it.
Why not? You told me.
I can show you the legal opinion from John Vircham. It's an appointment, it's a two-year appointment. Well, it's actually not a two-year appointment, just like in the past, I've said this to you. We appoint every two years, the building official, fire marshal, and the emergency. Those guys are in the union, number one, building official and fire marshal. And they're statutory, statutorily protected positions so that they're not subject to political whims. Exactly like chief of police, by the way, fire marshal and building official. I actually inquired of counsel, I said, I've heard maybe that emergency management director is similar, could you clarify that? His initial impression was that, I don't think so. And he did the research and he said, there is an argument for it in the statute, because the statute does say dismissed with, must be dismissed with cause of some, not just cause, but cause. So that is in the statute for emergency management director. So technically, I don't, you look puzzled.
I, well, no, I have questions, but yeah.
If we do not appoint Tom McIlwicky as building official at our next meeting, he's still building official. Because we can't remove him for two reasons. He's in the union, and number two, he's protected statutorily. And you need just cause to get rid of the building official and the fire marshal. And chief of police. You need cause to get rid of an emergency management director. Why that's in the statute, I don't know. Okay? But that was John Vircham's research that came back to me.
He couldn't come up with a cause?
No.
Why not?
For almost exactly the same reason you just said. He does a good job, but he should be separate. That's, that's not the.
He should have never been.
Well, he's been in that position for twenty years.
I understand that, but it's severed. He screwed the town and now you gotta sever all ties before you go.
I understand that argument, I do, I do. Okay? I understand that. All right.
So it's not then, I just, I wanna ask it just very, it's not as simple then as as making a different appointment after the election?
Well, it is. It's not.
What can he do, so yet?
And it's not as simple as that.
Yeah, it'd be great to see the opinion or the statute, I'll share that.
I will share.
Just so I can understand it, I'm not doubting you, I just.
No, no, I'm happy to share it, I'm happy to share it. All right.
Was he threatening to do anything?
No, no, absolutely not.
Just don't appoint him again.
There is, there is that option. This is gonna be a different board. I mean, you know, I'd love to have that back, he's done a great job. It's gonna be a different board, and that board will make that decision. I haven't talked to Scott about it. So, you know, that board will make the decision. And maybe the chief, the former chief wants to come in and talk about it. Maybe he doesn't wanna do it, I don't know.
Oh, you haven't had a discussion with?
We've talked about it, tangential, kind of, you know, big picture. And I've said, I'm not willing to talk about it right now. Because there are complications beyond just making an appointment every two years. There's the statutorily, there's the statutory length. So I appreciate the concern. And I will share that opinion with the board. Comments from the selectmen? What's yours?
Carl, just a question, kind of going off of that. So I believe that we have scheduled board of selectmen is is on Tuesday, November eleventh, so that's the week following, which is also Veterans Day.
Wait, hold on one second. Did we have a meeting already this month? We did, one meeting. This is our first meeting.
This is our first meeting.
This is our first, so we would have a meeting in two weeks.
Right, no, I know, but I'm going post-election.
Right.
Just kind of going off of this. So we have a meeting Tuesday, November eleventh, which is also Veterans Day.
Okay.
So I don't know if that impacts things or not in terms of the Veterans Day aspect. But do we, I can't remember if we make those appointments at the meeting immediately following the election, or if we do it.
In fact, you're not, the charter disallows any appointments
Until.
In that two-week period.
Got it.
And there was a, there was a going back to, I think, two thousand nine, the former board of selectmen tried to make an appointment for a particular non-union employee during that period before a new board came in. And I, I thank Carol Mann to this day. She said, you can't do it, the charter doesn't allow it. And I was happy because in two thousand eleven, I didn't get stuck with a long-term contract. I didn't win that election in two thousand eleven, right before I took office. So, and I've talked to Carol.
Okay, yeah, just asking to make sure that the newborn is prepared, I mean, it's.
Kind of a lame duck session, there are things you cannot do. There are, I think we could approve minutes, you know, and stuff like that.
But no budget items, yeah.
Nothing of.
Yes.
No appointments for sure, it's in the charter.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, I have one other comment. I had the opportunity to attend the swearing-in, as both of you did, for the new police chief. And it was my first opportunity too, you know, I was not involved in any of the hiring piece. And so I just wanna commend the police commission for that thorough process. And yourself Carl, because I know that you were involved. He seems like a really upstanding officer and public servant. And I'm having, gonna meet with him on Friday morning, just to introduce myself and, you know, get to know him a little bit. And, you know, heavy, you know, small worlds, you know, I talked with Tom Wiedra, who is now the director of post, who was there in attendance and somebody I know from my professional life and, you know, respect very much. And he was, you know, very, very complimentary of the chief, of our new chief. And so I look forward to achieving an off-field service to the town and commend everybody for the hard work.
Yeah. I've complimented the search committee plenty during this process. And one thing that was, I mean, I'm just gonna kinda go off your comment. One thing that I think we did as a search committee and the police commission did as an entity is they were able, this selection had to be made well in advance of the election. And it was, so it didn't become political. Now, can it be used in some sort of political, sure, it can be. But that, this selection, you know, there for a minute, there was discussion, hey, should we wait till after the election? Absolutely not, I was like, you know, politics shouldn't come into play for the long term. And this is a long-term decision, a long-term interest of the town. And I'm, I was very pleased with how the process went, how the search committee and then the police committee made their decision, and he's got, he's got a lot on his plate. So we had, just to give you an example, we had a department head meeting the other day, last week. And we were just talking about certain events like Celebrate Saybrook and Memorial Day Parade. I said, hey, did you ever hear of the torchlight parade? He goes, no. I'm like, well, we're gonna educate you. So we're actually meeting with the organizers of that parade this Thursday with the new chief. So and I had to explain what it is to him, so. Anyway. All right. Anything else, Matt?
That's it.
Scotty?
I'm all set, thanks.
So Pete Torrenti, the fire marshal resigned, retired last week. So we are interviewing today a fire marshal, a qualified fire marshal for the position. We had another applicant, he withdrew. But I anticipate we will be getting other applications. And I'll leave it at that.
So is that something that we posted and as a rolling?
It is posted.
Okay.
We, so a lot of times when we know we're not gonna get an internal application, because we're required by union rules to post these positions internally. We post them at the same time. And if we end up with an internal, qualified internal application, obviously we go down that route. But I think we are beyond that, I think it's five days. So I think today's, we're beyond that. And you know, we have a highly qualified outfit today. And you'll see further down the agenda, right now, we have no deputy and no fire marshal. So I'm going to be recommending the appointment of a per diem temporary fire marshal pursuant to state statute. However, if we end up with a full-time fire marshal soon, I want that guy or gal to be able to appoint their deputies. So I have two concerns, and I'll say it right now, with regard to appointment of a temporary fire marshal. So there's two things, and I've already alluded to them. I want it to be part-time, because if we say, hey, can you work twenty-five hours a week? They'll qualify for union. And I don't want to get into a situation where we've hired someone and they're accidentally in the union because they've worked a certain number of hours over a certain number of months. So when I, I have a draft employment contract from John Vircham for a deputy fire marshal, which not only will we control the hours, but just like we did with Chief Anofrio, they will waive the statutory just cause provision in the contract. And I don't want anyone claiming, hey, I was appointed fire marshal. You can't get rid of him now. So I wanna make sure it's air tight so that we have the protection of a fire marshal who can do the job if there's a fire tonight or some sort of other emergency. And by the way, just inspections. So there's a lot that goes on, there's building going on at Yale over on Spencer Plain Road. There's a plan review that needs to be done, so work needs to continue. And it's super interesting what the fire marshal does. It's a very wide-ranging series of events that they involve themselves in. From plan review to alcohol permits for restaurants. To fire investigations, to fire education. And there's all kinds of certifications that they have to get. So it's, it's kind of, it's an interesting role. And I've learned a lot more about it over the last year. So Pete resigned. And that, his final day is coming Friday, but he's taking some time off, comp time and some other time. So he's turned in his car and it sits in the parking lot. Open house is Saturday for the new police chief, I'll just mention that. We had dispatcher, our second dispatcher negotiations. We're probably gonna go to mediation next, we seem to be pretty far apart on that. Obviously, if there are further negotiations or mediations, the board of selectmen, and Matt, I know you'll be off, but the board of selectmen is welcome at, and I think you know this, the full board is welcome at mediation and negotiations. Those are considered non-meeting meetings, I think we all know that. So if you ever wanna be a part of that, Scott. Inham Hill Road, the state of David Byrne. I think I mentioned last time, they found a will, didn't I tell you that? They, so initially, everybody was saying, oh, I think he had a will, I think he had a will. But there was no will, so the estate was deemed to be what they call an intestate estate, no will. Which means everything David owned would go to his siblings and immediate relatives. I put in some sort of notice to the court saying, hey, the town has, I, what we believe to be a valid option on the property and we're interested in it and we wanna, you know, we're ready, we stand ready to purchase it. So I went up there, every now and then I'd go up and check and just say, what's going on with this? And I go up there and they said, well, the will was just probate. I said, the will? And so I have a copy of the will. And the will does leave his, most of his estate to a Tibetan organization, national Tibetan organization, not to anyone local. And I spoke to our attorney and it was recommended that I put a letter in the file, which I did last week. I wrote a letter to the probate court and saying, hey, we have an interest in this estate and we wanna be notified of all future hearings. So now the town on any hearing as it relates to that estate will be notified prior to any action being taken. So I just want you to know that happened. Any questions on that? So it's still not finalized, the estate. In fact, I've had no notice of any hearings. But the estate is still open, so the real estate remains in the estate. It hasn't been distributed. All right? So on the dock and dine property, there has been some back and forth just yesterday. Yeah, I was in here yesterday for a few hours reviewing what was presented to us and I responded to it yesterday. I'm not gonna go into the details of it. I am and I know we're talking about commercial blight ordinance, which may eventually affect the dock and dine property, certainly. If there is no transaction with the town. I'm still optimistic that both sides are interested in getting this done, I am. But I'll be honest with you, in some ways, I feel like it's Groundhog Day when I go, when I do this. So I had some vacuums put in front of us Friday, and I came in yesterday, these were quiet, and I kinda went to the right of my way. And I'm like, we've been through this. And I wrote back and I'm like, one of, and I've talked about the right of first refusal. But one of the other issues I have, very simply, is if we own this property, if we own it, there shouldn't be any restrictions on what we can do with it. Now, we're not gonna be doing a lot when it's in a velocity flood zone. And that doesn't look like it's gonna change in the next hundred years. And we know North Cove looks down on it. So it's not like we're gonna be able to say, we're gonna have twenty-five rock and roll concerts on Saturdays during the summer. There's gonna be very little that we're gonna be able to do with it. However, if the town wants to have. A fair down there, um. I don't know, call it a craft fair, call it a beer fair. I, I don't know. And we want to have a couple of pizza trucks and some craft brewers. We can't do that without, you know, getting permission and coming up with a parking plan and busing people. They have to park somewhere else. They can't, I'm like, no, 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 no. It's shared parking period. If it affects your business, it affects your business. But it's not gonna happen that much. Just not. So. There, uh, you know, and, and those, that's what we're discussing. Um, the fact is, it's. Largely, as we know, going to be a passive park if the town acquires it. However, that doesn't mean that the town might not hold a kite flying event, right? Where. Five hundred people show up, I don't know, and we want to have pizza for kids. We can't, you know, uh, there's not gonna be restrictions like that. So i- if we own the property, we own it. And no future first selectmen. I don't believe should first select person should have their hands tied. That's how I feel. And, um. So I am still hopeful that we can negotiate through some of these issues, but, um. I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit with some of their, um, terms. Kind of. Uh, and that was literally yesterday. So let's move on. Problemed minutes, board of selectmen meeting September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. I'll make a motion, sir, second, second. Any discussion, comments? All right, um, Matt, I don't know if you're at that meeting.
I wasn't at the board of finance meeting.
Uh, item number six A. So the fire department's looking for a new ladder truck. Um. So the idea is, there's a couple of ways we can do this. So it's about a one point eight million dollar purchase. And. It's a seven-year. Purchase. It's a seven-year financing, starting, I believe, in fiscal twenty-seven. That's what fiscal twenty-six. So fiscal twenty-seven. And the idea is to increase. The annual reserve in the cap- capital account for the fire department, the off-budget capital account. By twenty-five thousand per year, which is about six increases over the course, so over the next six years. And then that off-budget account does still go negative by about four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, at its worst. And then it, it immediately, or not immediately, but very soon thereafter, it comes into balance. We've gone negative in accounts before. We've done this. This is how we find it. So it's basically almost like just financing it through ourselves. It was the recommendation of the finance director that we not go negative a million dollars. Okay, so. She thought this was a little bit more palatable, a little bit better way to get there. In theory, it does commit a future board of selectmen to increases. If they choose. George Chang asked a question at the meeting, can we afford it if. Somehow that doesn't happen. I said, yes, it's just gonna take a little longer because we're putting money into that account. Every year, we're putting about two hundred thousand into that account every year. So it will get paid off. I mean, it'll get paid off in eight, eight years at this point. So. Anyway, so the truck doesn't arrive until two thousand thirty or so. But because it is. You know, in, in theory, we're just paying for it out of the capital reserve account of the fire department. I still think it's probably, um, something we can take to town meeting. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. We are talking about, uh, a large appropriation. I think if not, if there's no requirement to do it. Because we're paying it out of an account that's already being funded, um, maybe even for just transparency, letting them. You know, raising public awareness that we're making this purchase, uh, it might be a good idea. So the I, what I was gonna do is actually put this on the annual town meeting.
In November.
Yeah, fourth Monday. So, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion for discussion purposes and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any issues with the, uh, or any comments? I'm gonna say any comments.
I just wanna. Make sure that I'm, I'm understanding. So we are going to. Pay. In, we're guess, we're, we're talking about self-financing, but are we? But we're making the appropriate, the appropriation of one point eight million dollars to change. So are we actually paying it in a year-by-year basis over seven years?
We're paying a bank.
We're paying a bank.
Some interest.
Okay.
So. By committing to this purchase now, we did save some money and PNC Bank, I think it's PNC. Is going to pay Pierce now. So we're paying PNC over the next seven or eight years.
Yeah.
Is what we're doing. But.
So we're not financing.
To make those payments, we're using our capital reserve.
Our capital, and we're letting that go negative.
So we'll pay PNC whatever we need to pay. It just causes a negative balance over here, which we will take care of by funding.
We're not going negative in, in the, the bank account. The bank account got tons of extra money in it.
We're going negative in our account.
We are going negative in our, in a certain spot. And, uh, anyway, so. The finance director did look at this in about six different ways and this is what she recommended. There was another. Option to start paying, you could pay over three, five, or seven years. You could start paying now, you could start paying when the truck is delivered. And in terms of, um, the ultimate cost that you're paying. And, uh, the amount of interest we're paying on the loan, this was the recommendation. That the finance director made to the board of finance, which the board of finance endorsed. And now it comes to us. Uh, and, uh, when we do the call. Of the annual town meeting, which we'll probably do at our next meeting, um. That'll probably make sense. Uh, we'll put this on the agenda for now.
So, so logistically, I know, cause I was at the board of finance meeting, uh, when the chief came in and talked about this.
Yeah.
Earlier.
Right.
Concept, you know, conceptually before it came to the last one. And so I know it's a long lead time for the. Uh, construction of the fire trucks. The seven-year timeframe, as you said, we're not gonna have this, you know, in our hands until like twenty-thirty. Does the seven-year timeframe that we're committing to on the financing impact where we fit in the, in the production line? So the three-year timeline doesn't get us the truck a couple of years quicker, does it?
It doesn't. No, it doesn't. In fact, so Pierce is being, probably Pierce is gonna be paid almost immediately.
Yeah.
To start building the truck.
Okay.
So it's just a bank call.
Okay.
Like buying a house, right?
Yeah.
You still want.
So we may be on the hook then, uh, for needing to make repairs to our existing.
Uh, that, that, that's a question.
In the.
Yeah, they've spent some money on that truck already and they prefer not to spend a lot more. And so now that they know they got a new one coming, I hope that they can minimize what they might have to spend.
Yeah. The bare minimum, yeah.
Uh, they did, they did look at a repair, repair of the truck. There's a million dollars. It's a twenty-year-old truck, you know. So.
And, and we've surplus some of our vehicles and asked to receive. If I'm remembering right.
Correct.
So we've surplus, like, can we sell our vehicle and bring any value in?
It's crazy how invaluable they are. It's shocking how invaluable they are. I mean, like ten thousand dollars for a fire.
It's more like a hassle to take it away.
I don't even understand. Yeah. So. Um, anyway, moved and seconded, all those in favors, you can probably saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's, uh, talk about this. First blight ordinance. So it's not a lengthy ordinance. Um, there's a, two versions here. There's a clean and a red line. I didn't. Do you have both? And so it's not that long. So it's, it's literally four, three and a half, four pages long. I think you have together, what was a final clean and a final red.
Clean. I didn't see the final red one.
So, um.
Oh, there it is.
I will take a look at Kathy Connolly's email, um, and see where it fits in here. Um. So. You know, I, the funny thing is, I mean, there's obviously two properties that come to mind and that would, what the first one was. The custom marine building, which no longer exists. That was thirty years.
Yeah.
And, uh, the Dokken Dine property, which, um, this would apply to because it does talk about a vacant parcel of land. And, um. Matt, I, I know, uh, this is something that you wanted to move along. I'm not sure. It will move along on the timeframe that you might want it to. Um, but, um, I think. You know, it, it's something that has enough support that will carry it forward. I don't know when. You know, I don't know when it will go to town meeting. We'll bring it to a town meeting eventually in a final forum of some sort. I do, I think I've said this before and questioned the board that don't, these things are never a slam dunk at a town meeting. The residential blight ordinance was not pretty that night, about twenty years ago. It was a fifty-fifty vote essential. Uh, I don't know how this will go over. I'm not sure. Um, so, but it's a community discussion, right? But that's, and I'm happy to have that. Discussion and, and I'm sure you'll be there. To, uh, comment. Uh, so, um. Did, did you have a chance to look at it, Matt?
I did.
Uh, and I mean, unless you've studied many of them, I guess, or, you know, you don't know what you don't know, right? I mean, but, uh, this was for. The city of Norwalk, which is, you know, a large, a little bit larger city. What I like about this is it doesn't go on and on. So, you know, Kathy Connolly did mention some native grasses and. There is, there are exceptions in here for managed natural meadow landscape. And I'm not sure whether. That I'll, I'll compare what Kathy sends me. With this, but a plant intentional and maintained planting of primarily native gla- grasses, wildflowers. Ferns, sedges, shrubs, or trees. Um, doesn't include turf, you know, obviously. Um. So. Um, I will take a look at that, but, uh, you have my word that I'll move it forward, Matt, um. As we go through the process, uh, perhaps in two weeks. I could put together something that's a little bit more polished and final.
Yep.
For us to really talk about and the question is. I mean, you know, if we want to move it forward at that time, in theory, I suppose we could. So let's, why don't I do that? If you have any further comments on this. You can get them streaming.
Yeah, I didn't have time to look to see. To see at the rates, you know, like what are the different types of fines?
Yeah.
You know, and how does Norwalks compare to the other towns, um, potentially that was something.
Yeah, I don't know that. Um, you know, you start getting into fines, that's where you can get sensitive.
Yep, exactly.
But, so why don't I work on putting together an old Saberook ordinance for two weeks from now with maybe, take a look at Kathy's language. Um, if you have, kind of.
Yeah, no, no, we keep going. I just wanted to flag two things.
If you have any further input on this, feel free.
I want, in, in light of Kathy's comments, but also, I mean, you were mentioning the residential blight, um, ordinance, which. Think we had to use actually in the last. The residential blight ordinance, we actually had to use, um, in the last.
We used it multiple.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so here where it's talking about housing, we're talking about housing where it's a. Like it, where it's commercial, like managed property versus owner. Um, owner occupied housing. And I don't know if in our definition, we want to make it more clear. So that way we're not, um. We're not putting two different ordinances. In play that are then creating, you know, private homeowner thinking that this is a new ordinance that affects their property versus.
Whereabouts is, where, where are you?
So, uh, it's section fifty-eight A dash four, under warnings, citations, hearings, fines on the same. For housing blight, it's section B one A.
Okay.
It talks about for housing blight upon real property containing six or fewer units. And I, maybe I'm reading it wrong because I've missed another, um, paragraph, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's clear that this is. Managed commercial rental property versus. Residential property.
Okay. And your concern is in B and C there that it should be clearer?
Yeah, my concern, I, I think my concern is that. It, when we're taking this to town meeting, that somebody is going to think that this is applying to private residential property. In, and that it conflict, that they don't realize that the residential ordinance does. And. That's where I, I'm just not clear how one supersedes the other, uh.
You know, you might say that anything six. Or more is by definition.
Right.
Commercial.
Exactly. But that's, that's what I think. It was the sixer, it was really the six or fewer. So section A. That I was.
Yeah.
Concerned about.
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, not B and C.
Okay.
B and C made sense to me. It was A that I said so.
Okay, all right, very good. I'll, uh. Take a look.
Yeah, and then, I mean, um, thank you for bringing this forward on short notice. We brought this up at the last meeting. And I know that, you know, back when I was chair of the Economic Development Commission, this was something that we were. Very interested as a EDC at the time, trying to move forward for, for some of these sites that we're talking about, like custom marine. So I don't know if, once, i- if, if we have a draft. Of this before next board meeting, if it's something that we want to share with, you know, as a referral to economic development or.
Probably.
Planning or zoning. I don't want, I don't want it to.
No, that's true. I didn't think about that.
Starting to make the timeline, you know, longer than. I prefer, but I think it makes sense.
It doesn't matter. It's gotta be a thorough.
Yeah.
And you know what? And that, that's a very good idea to get. Input from other boards and commissions. So let me see what I can do about drafting something up, uh, with John Bertram. Uh, and putting this in. Some sort of form that, um, we can share after our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
All right, very. Okay. So discussion possibly answering, uh, ZB request to remove seasonal. Restriction for fourteen Bergy Road. Um, I'll make the motion.
Second, that's, you know, normal, assuming.
It, it is, um, so. I will tell you that, um, a lot of attention is being paid right now by land use. To try to clean up this seasonal list. Um, Chris Costa has spent a fair bit of time. Making sure that the properties that are truly seasonal are seasonal and the ones that can become permanent because quite frankly, some people. They might be in a seasonal home and living there permanently. So she's trying to look at those properties and say, oh. If you're living there, then all you need to do is X and then you can come off the list. So. Uh, she's taking the time to do that right now, which is a good thing. Um. And, uh, Lou was one of them, Lou and Nora Trichetta, and, um. So, uh, I, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, this was. Oh, this was more, um, yeah, what we're doing is we're removing the ZBA's earnings restrictions. Um, which condition the property is seasonal. Um, and by the way, I wanna go back to the commercial, I talked to Chris about that, Chris Costa, and, um. She didn't feel strongly either way, in fact, she said, written right, she thinks it's a good idea, so she, I wanted to say that in the meeting, not before.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so, um, Chris felt that, um. The seasonal restriction, which was on the ZBA land records. Could be removed, it's full time property, it needs help and safety, and, um. That's why it's on our agenda, so it's been moved and seconded, yes.
Yes.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
Clarification question, there's a, a memo that was part of this, that's from August eleventh. Um, that also dis, uh, um, discusses thirty one Nephew and Necco Trail. It, but we're, I just wanted to be clear that we're only removing the restriction from fourteen Verti Road.
That is.
I don't know if you're supposed to be doing both.
Yes, that is the only one we're doing at the moment.
Okay.
So. Yep. Um, alright, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify my saying aye.
Aye, aye.
And then encroachment permit, uh, this is a release of an encroachment permit. Or Jeff Lepowski, now move it, is there a second?
Okay.
This just means that he did what he was supposed to do, um, took out a permit. And then, so, all those in favor signify my saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, so, um. We, there's, uh, this is the fire marshal, we need a temporary fire marshal, um. And Phil Coco, who used to work at the PD. I don't know if you know the name.
I know the name.
He is, um. Let's see, he's been in the fire service since nineteen eighty two, he's certified as a fire marshal since two thousand one. He served in the town of Branford, currently part time fire marshal in Westfield District where I grew up, in the city of Middletown. And town of Middlefield, um, he's conducted, uh, inspections. Plan reviews and fire investigations, uh, including four fatalities, uh, which is unfortunate, um. So, it's. I, I will tell you that we, we put out for deputies, um. And we got, we interviewed about three or four people. Um. With the former fire marshal and, um. Um, we did not feel that three of them were. Uh, appropriate, at least the former fire marshal didn't. And then there's another gentleman who has only had his certification for about two years. And so given that we're without anybody right now. Um, we thought it might be best to put in someone who has experience. And that can, uh, do the job if we need the job done, uh, maybe we won't need it. I'm actually, if he's appointed, I'm gonna call him, I have a plan review that was referred to me late last week. Um, it's the property right next to the pool guy, they're starting to dig up there.
Yeah.
They, what you need, uh, is they submit a plan review. And the fire marshal has to give the permission to start construction essentially. I don't know if he'll be able to do that, that's part time per diem or not. Uh, the rate thirty five dollars an hour, just so you know, is kind of what's been talked about. Um, that is a little less than what would have been a full time salary, but. These positions are not super easy to find, I'll be honest with you, um. I think, I don't know if I mentioned it last meeting. CCM. They've actually asked me to sit on some sort of newly reconstituted board. About fire marshal standards and codes and I'm not sure I wanna do it, uh, but. There is a requirement that, like, three family residences be inspected by a fire marshal every year. In addition to other, I, things that a fire marshal has to do, and it's. If you talk to towns and cities all over the state, they are like, we can't get to, we don't have enough staff. And so there is discussion at CCM to possibly make a recommendation that that can go to two years. Maybe it shouldn't be every year, and that would give staff a little bit more time to actually make the rounds and be able to do it every two years. I don't know if the Fire Marshals Association will agree to that, they may not want to. Agree to it, so I imagine there might be a little push pull there, but, um. Is, I, it's just all over the state that it's hard to get. All the inspections that you need to get done, done, um, and I know that, I know that going back five or six years. So, anyway, um. Mr. Coco applied for the job, um, he recently retired, resigned, like six months ago from the Old Sabre PD. Um, I don't know him very well, I just saw all certifications, he seems to be the most qualified of any of the deputies that has applied. This is someone who, assuming we hire a new fire marshal. A new fire marshal will choose his own deputies, I wanna be super clear on this, that. This is not installing anybody, uh, for ever, uh, unless.
It doesn't affect our pension and everything.
No, not at all.
That's what you were mentioning.
So, um, and John, John Bertram sent me, um. And I sent, I send you the statute on appointment of fire marshals.
Right.
In the board, so, um, the legislative body, we don't have a board of fire commissioners, so the legislative body. Actually, for purposes of the appointment, the legislative body is the board of selectmen, and it says, the board of selectmen of each town. Um. Uh, shall appoint a local fire marshal and such deputy fire marshals. Fire inspectors and fire code inspectors or fire investigators as may be necessary. Then it, that's section A, so we have that power of appointment, okay? Then it says. The board of selectmen, this is section B, the board of selectmen. May, upon the death, disability dismissal, retirement. Or revocation of certification of a local fire marshal, so that is the position we find ourselves in now. And in the absence of an existing deputy fire marshal, that is the position we find ourselves in now, because when Pete left. Uh, Deputy Fire Marshal Leighton, Dick Leighton, also.
Exact.
Left. Uh, the board of selectmen, uh, can appoint a person who holds a fire marshal certification. Uh, certification issued pursuant to section twenty nine twenty eight as the acting fire marshal. So we can appoint either deputy or acting for a period of not to exceed one hundred and eighty days. I'm not recommending we do that, I'm actually recommending we appoint, uh, this gentleman as a deputy fire marshal. Um, under that statute. Yeah, um. Because I'm hopeful that we don't, we're gonna have a new fire marshal, actually, maybe even at our next meeting.
Yeah.
So we have an interview today at eleven thirty, if successful, I can. If this person comes highly recommended, several people that have come to me who I respect a lot. Um, I'm hopeful that we will have somebody in place, but we need somebody today, to be honest with you.
So is there, is there a draft? Agreement right now that we're approving, cause I, I would think that we need to make sure that whatever the motion is that we have is not just like a blanket. Motion, but it, it kind of sets the parameters that we're talking about.
I think what I'm asking for is that we, um, appoint as a deputy, this gentleman. And authorize me to enter into an agreement with him as a deputy fire marshal.
Okay.
It, and at a agreed rate, which is, I, thirty five bucks an hour, that's what I'm recommending.
Okay.
Um. And it will address some of the concerns that I have that this person doesn't work enough hours that. I end up in a union situation where the union says, hey, he's part of the union, you gotta hire him. Or in a situation where there's a statutory protection. That's. Um, so the. So it's interesting because. The statutory authority gives us the power to appoint someone for a hundred and eighty days, but if we did that, that person could claim union protection. So I don't think I would do that necessarily, right? So I don't know how those could, I, listen, I'm not gonna spend thousands of dollars from legal research. To figure out if that appointment invalidates the union protection, okay?
Can we appoint for less than one eighty? Or can we make an appointment today for, like, should we be setting a term in our appointment today for sixty days or ninety days?
No, I would just say per diem deputy.
Okay.
Per diem deputy, and that person can serve for the next ten years, as that, in that role.
And we can have multiple deputy fire marshals.
Multiple deputies, absolutely. You can have ten deputies. Um, as I said, we were trying to get some deputy fire marshals in here prior to the reservation.
Yeah.
And, um. The fire marshal at the time could not agree to any, and was not able to bring forth any. And it's unfortunate and, um. Uh, but I just want, I mean, this is really more for the protection of the town. That if there's a fire tonight, we can call on someone to do an investigation. That's basically it, um. And I'm, as I said, I'm hopeful and I will certainly let you guys know, uh, if we have a successful interview today. Alright, so I'm gonna make a motion, uh, to appoint Phil Coco as, um. Deputy Fire Marshal, uh, we'll be paying him on a per diem basis and that this board. Give me the authority to enter into an agreement with him to act in that role. That sound okay? That's a motion.
Yes, second.
Matt, you go with it?
Yeah, I'm supportive, just reiterating, as long as the, the agreement that we execute protects us from that statutory. All the statutory issues we discussed.
That's, believe me. Um, okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Alright, so now we have a public health nursing board reappointment of, uh, Diana Aldy, I clarified this, Matt.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, she was up for appointment last year and, um. George Jan thinks it slipped her mind, and it should have been a three year appointment last year, she's been sitting for the last year.
Okay.
Um, so we'll reappoint Diana, I'll move to reappoint Diana Aldy, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Then we have our tree committee, two appointments, Amy Searle and Alan Schwartz, we'll just do them together, um, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, we did, I'm Matt, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Um, any other business for the good of the board?
Yeah, um, just as we were talking about the, the turnover and a new board of selectmen and what we can and can't do. One of the things I was thinking about, you know, I'd like a, an update as to how we're doing with our wastewater, um, testing. Um, and process, and so I was thinking with new people coming into board of finance, board of selectmen. We're gonna have some, um, decisions to make and so I, or you. I think we should be thinking proactively about an, uh, kind of an update joint meeting for everybody. So after the, after the election, so that all the new sitting members understand everything, all the work that's been done on that project. And what the actual decision points are in our.
So long meeting.
It is.
No, right.
It is.
No, you're right.
I think it, it was a challenge for me when I came on here six years ago and having only tangential awareness of the project. So, just a, a recommendation for you.
Um. It's a good idea, because certainly on the board of finance, you are definitely gonna have three new members, maybe four new members. You know, and, so there, there's a lot of turnover happening with three people not running. Um, and certainly, uh, with Jane coming on this board, so, um, I have no doubt that Jane will. Have a quick learning curve though, so, alright, um, good idea, uh, and. It is nine thirty four, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.